Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for October 7th, 2024. We do have three board members here and we do have a board member on Zoom. To start the meeting, our first matter would be the approval of the minute from September 19th, 2024. Any of the board members have any comments or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, just I'll be abstaining. I was not present at that meeting.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the minute. All in favor say aye.
Yep, second.
Okay. Minutes are approved. Thank you. First matter on the agenda this evening is 197 Beacon Street, proposed public shade tree removal hearing. There's been a request from the applicant to continue it to November 19th. I will read the advertisement. In accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 87.5 and Chapter 260 of the Lowell Code of Ordinances, the Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to removal of 61 total trees at the above address. Three proposed trees to be removed, greater than 24 inches in diameter, and the remaining 58, less than 24 inches in diameter. The trees and their roots are hazardous to the drinking water, infrastructure, and undermined water sewage tanks. We received a letter requesting the matter be continued. They indicated that they were trying to work with some of the concerns that were raised at the last planning board meeting, so they're requesting a continuance to November 19th. What's the request of the board? Anybody have any problems with the continuance? If not, I'll make a motion to continue to November 19th.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 That matters approved.
Mr. Chairman, if I just may, the applicant, Peta, just want to make sure from a timeline, did they sign? I mean, we basically have an acknowledgement that it's not a, you know, we haven't rendered a decision that it's not approved. I mean, is that part of this form?
Yeah.
Is it part of the form?
Yeah.
Where they requested, okay, I just want to make sure.
We're aware it hasn't been approved. We just need more time to, like, Mr. Tenter had said, he wants a lot more facts and to know where the trees are going to be planted.
Okay.
We want to make sure that I's are dotted and the T's are crossed and that we put a plan forward that's, you know, acceptable to the board and to the residents in the neighborhood. We also, not positively, but we may be able to reduce the scope on the amount of trees that are going to be taken down. So we really want to look further into it to make sure we have a solid plan moving forward.
So once you have them all marked properly, can you let staff know? Because as you know, we go up and look at the sites.
Sure, absolutely.
But one of the questions we'd have is, now, some of the trees are going to be inside the fence, right?
Inside the open reservoir fence?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of those being removed. We generally will hire DPW once a year to go in there and groom them down.
Okay.
But we wouldn't want to remove the roots from there because it's considered a high hazard dam through the Department of Conservation and Recreation.
So there won't be any inside? Okay.
No.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right. So the matter, who was ever watching tonight, the matter will be continued to November 19th. Thank you. Okay, moving along. A new business, we have 5 Hampshire Street, a special permit. Banks Building Consultants LLC, on behalf of Sam Bowles, has applied to Lowell Planning Board seeking to convert the attic of an existing two-family into a third unit at the above address. The subject property is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval from the Lowell Planning Board per Section 12.1(c) for three units on a single lot. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, hello. My name is Abolys Mannan and I'm the architect for this project. And we are requiring for a special permit to turn the three units. We won't be changing the envelope of the property. It'll be just the added space to be turned into a third unit.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Nope, that would be it for my end.
Anybody else on behalf of the applicant want to be heard?
I think we're good.
If not, okay, if not, I'll turn it over to the public. Anybody here tonight in favor of the special permit for Hampshire Street? In favor? In favor? I'm going to go, who's ever in favor first, then who's against after, and then after that, any comment field will do. Okay? All right. So in favor, have none. Any in opposition? Anybody, anybody in opposition, just come to the microphone, give us your name and address.
John Nakopoulos, I'm the property owner of 15 Hampshire Street, which is two buildings down. The, if you're familiar with Hampshire Street, you'll know that parking is very restrictive. We have people parking from West 9th, from all over the place, and it's very difficult to park on the street. And to have another unit in there would cause more parking problems. It's totally congested. That's my opposition to it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Anybody else like to speak on this matter? Yes, cut the microphone, please. Can you state your name? Thank you.
Corey Robinson, 5 West 10th Street. I'm not speaking for or against. I've talked to some of my neighbors in that area. The only concerns I've heard about this project have been parking, because it is a congested area. I'm not sure of the requirements in that section, and also just cleanliness. We struggle down in that area because it's so densely populated, and anything that can be tied into maybe a designated space for their waste specifically, because, I mean, the properties are five feet apart, if that in between, and we're already dealing with the cleanliness issues. But aside from that, those were the two concerns I heard from the neighbors. Thank you.
So basically, the answer to your question is, so it's a two-family now, so they're required to have four parking spaces there now. If they add another unit, they're required to pick up two more parking spaces, and the regulation calls for six parking spots.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. Anybody else want to speak on this matter? Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? Here and none. This time, I'll turn it over to any of the board members that have any question.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
You know, in reading the comments and looking at the application, on its surface, you know, we're looking at adding one unit on the third floor, two bedrooms. You know, we do need housing in the city, and it's residential use, it's consistent, there's a park across the street, there's the, the public gardens, which is actually very nice. I was at the dedication when the traffic circle was completed. I think Manager Cox was the manager at the time. I believe he was at the opening ceremony. But when I, when I took a turn down onto Hampshire Street on Sunday morning, and I like to go, especially if parking is a concern, Sunday morning will give you an idea when everybody's home. And I could not, there was another car coming in the opposite direction. We couldn't, we couldn't go down the street. Somebody had to move over. There's a no parking sign on the opposite side of the street, right across from this particular building. There's signs in the park, now, this is early Sunday morning, and there was one person walking in that park, there was nobody in the public gardens, and there's signs that say parking, you know, parking is reserved for the park only, and it was full. It was full with cars, because obviously they're parking there overnight. I know Shed Street is a tiny street, I know that comes out, I suspect people that live there are parking on Hampshire Street. That's the problem. I mean, we've approved a lot of projects with limited parking, but there's been some compensating factors for that, and I'm hard-pressed to find compensating factors around there. There's no city parking garages that are located there. I just, I have a real hard time with taking the, that situation where there's currently no parking spaces for that property as it sits, and then adding to that. It's unfortunate, it looks like there's a lot of land in the back. It'd be great if somehow we could get to the back of that property. And I, you know, from an architectural and engineer perspective, if you could find a way to get back there, I think that would be huge. And I think it would actually be a selling point to, you know, whoever owns the property and trying to rent it out, because I think that would be really fantastic. I just, I really have a hard time with, with the parking. You know, it's a tough neighborhood for that reason. So I'm curious to hear my colleagues on the issue. Part of a special permit and part of the criteria that we look at, and this is Section 11.3, is of 11.3.2 criteria, number two, traffic flow safety, including parking and loading. And then under the section for special permit, we've got traffic access safety. Will the project impact an area with significant on-street parking? Does the project provide adequate parking for visitors? I mean, it's, understanding it's a congested neighborhood, it's not, we, in the downtown urban areas, we, urban zones, with access to the Gallagher Terminal, we've approved with limited parking. Matter of fact, there's no parking requirement in most of the downtown area now. But you get into this, this is a, still a residential neighborhood, but very congested, and I think even the people that spoke here today, tonight, that's the issue is the parking. So, and I didn't even see one extra spot. I didn't see one extra spot. So that was, that was a real concern, and like I said, they were parked where it says reserved only for the, for the park, it was, it was full. You know, so there was a beautiful Mustang that was parked in there, and I'm saying to myself, I can't even imagine owning that car and being parked over there. So anyways, I'll defer to my colleagues at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Do you need ten, John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I visited this last Monday during the day, because I thought a lot of people wouldn't be there, and I wasn't able to park when I went by. The lot that's across the street from this proposed site, which is next to the garden, that also had a couple of vehicles in it. Unfortunately, my first reaction was, holy crap, we're going to try to put another unit in here? I very much appreciate the applicant spending money to try to invest in Lowell. That is very much appreciated. Unfortunately, I think we wouldn't be doing our job if we allowed an additional unit here without any parking. Basically, the unit has no parking now, and adding another unit would just require a couple of more spaces. So I'm, I'll be a little more short-winded than my colleague. I'm not in favor of this.
Thank you. Allison, any questions or comments?
No similar comments. My colleagues, those, that very congested area. Having lived down in that area, how, when only one car can pass, but more so, I also wanted to understand a little bit about, especially those attic areas, kind of about ventilation and air conditioning, but we might not even be at that point.
Okay, thank you. We did also receive a letter from the Deputy Chief, Robert Crabtree, from the Fire Prevention Bureau. He says he believes the building inspector wants to do a pre-inspection of this property to ensure proper egress before they would approve the project. The owner would also need to be aware that this usage change would require an upgrade to the fire protection, specifically hard-wired detectors and hard-wired interconnected for any common areas meeting this criteria. Besides that, Deputy Fire Chief had no further comments. I have the same concerns as the other board members. I was here again today, and there's no parking on the street. As indicated earlier, as I said, for the two-family unit, they're supposed to have four parking spaces. They have not. So they want to add a third unit, and so they're required by code to have six, and they have none. When I went up and down the street a couple of times, a lot of the other houses, you know, they're two families in the neighborhood, but a lot of them do have driveways. And this area did not have, did not have a driveway, where I could see where the other houses that had two families did have driveways. And as indicated by Attorney Fichette, I mean, by Mr. Fichette, not Attorney Tenter, I'm sorry, that there's no visitor parking, so we have to require visitor parking. I know, you know, everybody's looking for us to give more housing in the city, but, you know, you have all this congested in the neighborhood, there's no place for these cars to park. As indicated, only one car can get down the street at, during some times, and with the weather now, never mind in the winter, and also could come down to a hazard where a fire truck couldn't get down there or an ambulance. I don't know how a fire truck would get down there, if a regular car can only go one at a time. So those are my concerns as well. It's just too congested and there's not enough parking. So those are my concerns. Thank you. So what's the request of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny the special permit on the grounds that it does not provide adequate parking for the additional unit.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote, here. Okay. Sorry about that, but we didn't know how to prove it. We need more parking. Thank you. Okay, moving along on the next matter, let's see.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
I need to recuse myself from the next petition.
Okay, all right. So Attorney Tenter, I was stepping down for a proposed rezoning amendment. Okay.
You don't need a stick?
Nope, nope, nope. We're just going to point you to a stool for it. He's coming back. Moving along on the agenda, we have a proposed zoning amendment, 534-556 Chemsford Street. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Lowell, Massachusetts, with respect to Chapter 290, therefore entitled Lowell Zoning Code, by extending the existing suburban multifamily zoning district to include an area presently zoned regional retail at the above address. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Chairman Lindenhut, members of the Planning Board. My name is Attorney John Cox, 375 Gorham Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I represent John Maria. John is a president of Lowell Central Electric, Inc., a family business which was started in Lowell in the late 1950s. So a business that's been around for, in Lowell, for over 50 years. I say, you know, most people in Lowell know of them and know of the reputation that they have, and so they own, they have owned this land, some of this land on Chemsford Street for many, many years. One other thing about Lowell Central Electric, they employ about 50 people currently, you know, many from Lowell, but all from the surrounding area. So they, they own the property at 534-556 Chemsford Street. Just a little bit of history on it, there are, as is pointed out, there are eight parcels here that we're talking about. The city had, there were three of them owned by someone else, like, basically right in the middle of these eight parcels. It got behind taxes, it went to the land court. It was in the land court for a long time. It finally came out of the land court, and the city took those three parcels, you know, as a tax-taking. The city put out an RFP back in, believe it or not, 2002, and Mr. Maria responded to the RFP. He's here, he's here this evening, by the way, with his wife, responded to the RFP, and the piece of, the property was, the three parcels were awarded to, to Mr. Maria. In May of this year, we closed on the property for $480,000. Mr. Maria paid the city for those three pieces. So he currently has all eight pieces now. It's about a 40,000 square foot piece of land, I believe. Sorry? I'm sorry, I was off a little bit. 83,000 square foot. That's the other one I was thinking about. 83,000 square foot piece, so it's a big piece of property. And when Mr. Maria answered the RFP, he answered it that he would develop it into housing, which was what the city wanted and what the city still wants. So once we closed back in, in May, we were contacted by Lowell Housing Authority. Lowell Housing Authority owns property adjacent to this property and to the rear of this property. There are, there are housing units adjacent to it on the side. In the back, there are no housing units in the back. I think the Housing Authority uses it for storage or something to that effect. The reason they can't do housing back there is because there is no access. That back property is basically landlocked. So we met with the Housing Authority, we met with the executive director, and I've agreed to, if this proposal were to go through, and the proposal that you have before you to go through, that they would be able to use our access road as an access road to get back to, to their property for future development. Clearly, they don't need it if there's nothing back there, but if they develop it, you know, we will, they will have an easement from us for access. So the reason we're here tonight is we are starting the process clearly to put housing in there. This property is currently zoned RR, a regional retail. And to get, to do housing back there, we need to have it rezoned or extend the zone, the suburban multifamily zone over this property. So this is obviously the beginning of a multi-step process. We've been before the council, and the council has referred it to the Planning Board. I believe we are back in front of the council next week, hopefully with a positive recommendation from the Planning Board as to that the Planning Board supports the rezoning of this piece of property. So it's a two-fa. It certainly helps the city out. There is no, there's no taxes generated currently. Mr. Maria has paid almost $500,000 for the property, and the Lowell Housing Authority will benefit greatly from, from this development. We also have, and you have, it's been, I know, distributed to the board, a very, very strong letter of support dated September 30th from the Lowell Housing Authority, from Executive Director Ta Chan, supporting this rezoning. There was also a very strong letter of support in a memo dated September 18th from DPD staff, which point out that the eight parcels are currently undeveloped, rezoning the property would be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, and it would also be in accordance with the, the plans for Lowell going forward, Lowell, the actual plan Lowell forward. So there also, it was an updated memo today, actually, from the Fire Department and Engineering. The Fire Department says, I have no comments. Engineering says, no comments or objections. So that's a very strong memo. And then we also have, as I hope you have, a email dated September 24th from Ali Carter, the Director of Economic Development for the city, who also supports this. She says, in short, I don't think the property is desirable enough for commercial use or generating enough commercial tax revenue to justify denial of the request, especially with the imperative to produce housing in the master plan. Our plan would call for the production, for the creation of 81 housing units in three buildings on this property. I think, that's got a plan someplace. Do you have, do you have the colored plan you can just show them?
Please.
Thank you, Matt. And as I said, the Housing Authority property we're talking about is in the rear of this property, obviously opposite of Chemsford Street. So we think it's a good plan. The city apparently thinks it's a good plan, DPD and Economic Development. We are requesting a positive recommendation from the Planning Board this evening, and then we would go to the city council for, hopefully, their concurrence with you. Then would be before the ZBA at some point for variances, and back, back to the Planning Board for site plan review and a special permit. So we, we hope and request that the board would look favorably upon this tonight and pass this on to the council. Any questions? We're happy to answer them.
Thank you, Attorney Cox. Anybody else but the applicant want to speak? Matt, you have anything to say? You good?
You want me to overread the document?
Yeah, yeah, since you've left your plan here, I might as well show them, you know. Show us the original.
Just tape it for, like, eight weeks, and then we'll come back.
I like the bigger one. Yeah. Plus, it's nice to have the people who are watching know exactly.
For the record, Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering and Surveying, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass. So I'm going to go back to this plan, showing you the zoning extension. So here's the, the separation of three districts. There's a two-family, traditional two-family district on the other side of Chemsford Street that extends down Chemsford Street on the westerly side. This is the SMF district, which is the suburban multifamily that comes all the way around the property to the rear, that encapsulates the Lowell Housing Authority property. And there's also a USF district.
Darn interrupt, it's not coming through. I can only see Chairman on the Zoom, so the plans are not being shown.
She can't see the plane.
Oh, yeah, they're not on the television.
Yeah, it's not showing up on the TV for some reason.
No.
He has to move them, I can't see it because, I can't see it when he puts it.
Where do you want to put it?
It can just, like, anywhere but that corner.
Okay, thank you.
That's my favorite corner.
I wonder why.
Before television.
It's finally been discovered that that corner, no one can see that corner.
Has that plan worked now?
Now, let's give him a chance to.
Pull that up on the screen.
Watch him, he might have to be, oh, here we go.
There we go, Matt, you're all set. Thank you, Allison.
So again, Ms. Wilson, here's the zoning district line here, traditional two-family district in the SMF district. The SMF is here. This is RR district, and then the, the single-family lots off of Quimby Avenue are in the USF, which is a urban, single-family district. The SMF would include the entire parcel owned by Lowell Central Electric Company. That's the zoning extension. The district extension will be approximately 2.12 acres of land.
So Matt, does it, does it incorporate the USF zone as well? Does that get changed, or does that stay as a little island out there?
No, this district is not changed at all.
All right.
That, that district line is here.
Okay.
Heading in that direction for that single-family neighborhood. The proposal that was put forward to the Department of Planning and Development through the process of, through the RFP process, has essentially been has essentially been this plan, which will be three four-story residential buildings with below-grade parking underneath. Each building will consist of 27 units, which will be accessed through an access drive with some exterior parking areas and providing a 24-foot access easement to the Lowell Housing Authority property. And we're in the process right now of preparing the plans to...
So that wouldn't be a public way for subdivision?
That's not going to be a pub... What we don't want is this entire development to start coming out in this direction. It will be limited access for something in the rear here.
By way of easement, like you said. Okay.
And that's essentially the proposal for the development.
Thank you very much. Before I open up the public, like Attorney Cox said, we did get a letter from the Lowell Housing Authority. It's dated September 30th. Dear Chairman Linehan, members of the Planning Board, I write to you today in support of Mr. John Maria's request to extend the suburban multifamily zone to include his property at 534-556 Chesford Street, which is currently zoned as regional retail. The extension of the zoning district will allow Mr. Maria to develop what is currently a vacant 83,000-square-foot piece of property into 81 new units of housing. The Lowell Housing Authority owns land to the rear of the parcel, which is landlocked. We have met with Mr. Maria, and he has agreed to grant an access easement to Lowell Housing Authority, which will allow us to potentially develop our land in the future, as shown on the plan. We request an approval of the request from both the Planning Board and the Lowell City Council. Thank you for your consideration. Ta Chan, Executive Director, Lowell Housing Authority. At this point in time, we turn it over to the public. Anybody here this evening want to speak in favor of the rezoning? Anybody in favor of rezoning? In favor? In favor? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. This time, we'll turn it over to the board members.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Clearly, it is, whenever we get a request for zoning change, I go to the existing zoning map, which is getting a little tired now. It's from 2010. But when you look at that location, it is odd, the way that wraps around. Yeah, I know Plain Street is right around McConner, but the likelihood of that being developed for regional retail with that intersection there as well, I think, would be a difficult situation. So it seems like a logical, a logical extension of the SMF zone. I, actually, the USF zone looks a little odd sitting out there. But I suspect it has to do with the existing density within that particular area. And obviously, you responded to an RFP from the city. We're looking for housing. And, you know, clearly, you know, not to mix how people view development, but you do have parking. You've got underground parking. You've got surface parking. There's a lot of units, but you're accounting for that. And then you can control it sometimes with the size of the units as well. So I just think it's a logical extension of the zone, and I certainly would be in favor of providing a positive recommendation. Thank you, Ms. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Fichette. Allison, any question or comment?
Just that this is exactly the thing I was expecting to see with the Lowell plan forward. So thank you so much for this. My only concern is that my favorite cobbler, Mr. Portress, might get too busy. Other than that, it's a great plan.
Thank you. Yeah, looking at the plan, I'm in favor of the zoning change. As indicated, you received a favorable reply from planning staff. I think they labeled out everything. And obviously, it complies with our Lowell forward plan. When that Lowell forward plan was addressed to us, was in the plan, they talked about allowing residential units in the regional retail unit, in the zone. So if they were thinking of putting residential in, this basically accomplishes the same thing by making it the whole residential area. I was up here today and up and down the street. You can tell there's residential across the street, up the street, all the way up to the 99th on both sides of Chesford Street. And then when you move down further, you get more into the businesses. But this is basically all residential area. Like I said, I looked at all the comments. Everybody was in favor. And I have no objections at all. I think there'll be benefits for the housing stock that we need in the city. And I think residential will fit in well in that neighborhood. So I'll make a motion that the Planning Board give a positive recommendation to the City Council.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 So the motion carries. Good luck with your project.
Members of the board, I want to thank Peter and Francesca and Dylan and all their staff.
Thank you very much. Good luck with it.
Thank you very much.
Imagine we'll be seeing you...
It's been a month or so.
You can have this one back. We'll be seeing something more in detail.
I'm going to keep it. I want to compare it to what you...
Well, we know it has no binding effect when we do the zone change. Good luck. You're welcome.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Moving along, any board members have any further comments? Hearing none, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's made. I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night, and thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you so much for accommodating.
Thank you.